... attendance at tonight's meeting concerning the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley. It's extremely important to us to address your concerns, and tonight's hearing is a significant step in that direction. We will first see a presentation by the New Hanover County Schools that provides a background and facts about the program at Mosley. We will then look forward to hearing from you. We have a list of individuals who have signed up to express their concerns over this issue and have provided the opportunity for them to do so through a call to the audience forum. We will conclude after the hearing, we will conclude after the hearing these concerns so we can process and discuss this information and feedback and determine the proper course of action for the future. Our intent is to include the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley on the agenda of our next regular board meeting for a decision. At this point, Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Good afternoon. Pete Wildebohr.
Present.
Melissa Mason.
Here.
Josie Barnhart.
Here.
Pat Bradford.
I am here.
Stephanie Crable.
Here.
Hugh McManus.
Here.
And Stephanie Walker.
Here.
Okay, at this point, we will have our invocation.
Let us pray. Dear God, we come this day to ask your blessings upon the New Hanover County school system, the Board of Education, the superintendent, the entire staff that constitutes the New Hanover County School System. We lift before you this day, the students, the faculty, then every component of this system. We pray the Lord that you would grant each and every one the wisdom, the knowledge, for the facing of this hour. Bless the students who find themselves in unusual times, challenging times like never before. We pray that your grace, your Holy Spirit, would lead, guide, and direct this school system in the way that you would have them to go, that every student will receive the knowledge that you have equipped them to receive. I pray your blessings upon the New Hanover County School System. It's in your son, Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, I would need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Bradford, second. You're a second. Ms. Walker, thank you. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. At this point, that passes seven zero. At this point, we will ask Dr. Phason to come forward, and she will start with our presentation. Good evening.
This evening, Ms. Barnum and I will provide you with some data points on the high school So the first slide you see is are the high school opportunities in our current high schools. And since we're talking about Mosley, I will highlight Mosley. As you can see, they currently do not have any pathways. They do not have a dual enrollment program. They do have two students that actually go to CFCC, but when you have the dual enrollment program, that comes with a college liaison and the support. So they don't have that aspect of the program. Next is the academic data. And keep in mind, when our state measures, they use fours and fives for college and career readiness. So you have on one side the fours and fives at Mosley, and these are the measures that our state uses to measure a school's performance along with the graduation data that Mrs. Barnum will provide. A level three is considered proficient, but again, a four and five is college and career ready.
So as requested, providing you an overview of Mosley's graduation rate that has been submitted and verified by the Department of Public Instruction. On a four-year cohort, so what's important to know about a four-year cohort is it's calculated based on the year the student enters the ninth grade with completion of graduation requirements within that four years. So as you can see, over the past five years of data as reported and verified, you can see the Mosley student count of graduates in each year, the Mosley rate for graduation, and of course, these students are within CRA at Mosley. This data is attached to Mosley as a school, but the data only comes from CRA at Mosley as they were the only students seeking high school graduation within the program. And then you can see the New Hanover County Schools' overall graduation rate by comparison.
So Mosley the lowest?
I've got that on the next chart or on a chart, might be the very next one, very next one, second to the lowest. So here you are. Here you see CRA at Mosley graduation rate in comparison to our other high schools over the past three years with the cost per pupil, and this is the most recent cost per pupil analysis that we have. And again, let me know if you have questions on this. You have one question?
Can you sort of give us a little bit of, you're looking at about $12,000 for a whole year at school. Can you calculate why Mosley is more than that?
Can you do that, Dr. Phason? Or Ms. Mason?
It is due to the costs of, we have to provide all the teachers for the high school program. So you have to keep in mind that the number of students is low, but we still have the 15 positions that are serving those students. And Dr. Barnes, if you want to add anything?
Just that obviously, the state of North Carolina requires a certain number of credits for graduation. Only some of those can be done by certified core teachers. The rest are electives, and to have a spread of choices for those students to take requires a larger number of teachers.
So let me extrapolate that. If these students were in another building in the same program that had access to teachers, then they would, the cost would go down, correct? Jim's hand?
If those students...
Teachers would already be there.
I'm sorry?
Teachers would already be there.
If those students accessed the teachers that were already at Hoggard or New Hanover, then the overall cost for those students would go down because they would access other elective teachers.
Here you have CRA at Mosley dropout rate, which is different from graduation rate because it's not calculated by the same number of students or even the same grouping of students. This is not based on cohort, and dropout can occur at any time, and students can be counted multiple times in a dropout rate. This is just to show you the 21, 22, Mosley, CRA at Mosley rate and the 22, 23 in comparison to the overall rate. Keep in mind, the 22, 23 overall rate for the district is a projection of 2.18 until it is approved and verified by DPI. Additional key data points, as you can see in the, in the left sticky, you've got your number of seniors by GPA range. So for example, you have two students in their senior year that fall in the 3.0 to 3.4 GPA range and as follows. The middle section really gives you an idea of IEP or exceptional children, so IEP being Individualized Education Plan or Program, and then Exceptional Children Impact. So currently, 22.5% of the CRA at Mosley students have those Individualized Education Programs. That's 14 students. But keep in mind, none of those students are placed at CRA at Mosley specifically for their IEP services. So the services at Mosley are resource level only for the CRA program. So Career Readiness Academy has resource level services, which serves the majority of students with special needs. But if a student required more maximum service, IEP services, like a specialized program for intensive social communication supports, intensive behavior supports, then those would not be served at CRA at Mosley. They would be served back in their traditional high school.
You mentioned IEPs. Do we have a percentage of 504s, students with 504s?
No, I didn't bring that data, but I can get that for you. Yeah. And keep in mind that this does not include, that calculation of percentage does not include our students in our TPYA Transition Program for Young Adults Program as those students are not seeking high school graduation in the same way. And then the next data point, as of December 2023, so keep in mind, we operate a predicted graduation rate by school and by month, and our school staff help compile that, our student support staff at the schools work on those by managing and monitoring all of our students' plans toward graduation. For CRA at Mosley, the predicted graduation rate, if graduation happens right now, is 76.5% compared to the overall district predicted grad rate of 87.7. Again, if graduation is today, that's who, that's who crosses the line. The district rate is expected to increase over time as consistently over the past several years. From December to June, we see that rate increase.
So the chart here shows the current students' preference by where they reported they would like to go if the adult, I mean, the high school program was no longer at Mosley. And keep in mind, this was prior to any school visits. The students have visited a couple of schools. So as you can see, the majority of the students want to go back to a traditional high school. This is self-reporting, with a number, the second highest being CTEC, with 22 of the students at this time wanting to go to CTECs and a couple at WECs. Please remember that the application for these students is waived, and they would Go to a traditional high school. Zone school and traditional high school, and you add the two together, you get the 26, yes?
So a follow-up to that is, were they asked if, what their preference was if they could stay also? I mean, I'm curious because I...
No, this, this was not, this was if, the choices that were there out there, no.
So you're saying if you...
Yes.
We disband the program, these are your choices, which would you pick?
Yes.
But were they asked if they could stay? Would they stay?
Not at this time.
Dr. Phason, would you explain to us, to everyone here, what college and career readiness proficiency means?
So college and career... Go back. So basically, what it's saying, sir, is that you are ready to go to college. So this is the state measurement when they say you are ready to go to college. And the state allows for level threes to be proficient, but it is not saying that you are college and career readiness, ready.
Could you be more definitive when you talk about career readiness with regards to their math skills, their writing skills, their reading skills? That's a broad term, college, career readiness.
Well, basically, when you're looking at college and career ready, you're looking at students who can go to college and for the most part, maybe not take remedial courses and be ready to adapt, I mean, to really jump into the college course. You know, at times, we have students who go to college and they have to take some remedial courses. So when you look at a student who is level, or level four and five, most of the time, they do not have to take the remedial courses at college.
What percent of these kids go to KFIR and/or another college-related, or how many go to work? Have we done that, have we ever followed that?
The percentage, percentage of students from Mosley?
Yes, ma'am.
No, I do not have that.
Phason?
You asked the students, their preferences. Do we know if these, one, if these students have applied and how many students from Mosley have actually applied for a specialty school?
No, we are still in the process of working. I guess we'll stop the process now, if I understand correctly. But, well, no, we're extending the process. We're not stopping the process. So they're in the process because what we're doing too is we're trying to make sure that the counselors talk to each other and make sure that we have some supports in place.
Can we quickly just break down, when this started, there were 60-some students, and then so many were going to graduate. So then it was 50-some students, and now we're down to 40-some students. So can we break that down just exactly?
Okay. So when we started this process, and you know, I didn't pull power school today, there were 63 students at Mosley in the high school program. 11 of those students were seniors or are seniors. So if you take away, you have 52 students that are left for ninth through 11th grade.
I have a couple, and I apologize, but this is, it's on the second slide where it looks at the chart, what all the schools have and what they don't. It says Mosley doesn't have a stay program. I've heard that's not true. Can we confirm whether they do or don't?
The stay program is actually, the stay program is actually where we take students and move them in smaller courses and cohorts, so you wouldn't have or need that program at Mosley because the classes are already extremely smaller than any of the traditional classes. So it's like you move as a cohort. So all of our students at Mosley, if they're in the ninth grade, they're going to move as a cohort with those other ninth graders, and the classes are already going to be small.
Okay, just to follow up on that, CTEC does, I don't, I don't know the statistics on the students' information, but like, does CTEC have IEP, do they have all those chances to get help if they needed it at CTEC?
Yes, we, we have to. CTEC is a public high school, so we do have that. We actually have been working with Mosley staff and CTEC staff. Mosley, I just want to shout out their staff. They have been phenomenal in supporting their students. We've been working with Ms. Branch and collaborating with them and the counselors at CTEC just to have those conversations. But I've also, we've also had conversations with Dr. Skipper because we know we're going to need some additional supports, and we're going to put those supports in place.
Mr. Chair, is it appropriate to ask, what are some of those additional supports that you're looking into putting in place?
So we, one of the first things that we talked about was actually providing the teachers some extra time to maybe tutor and work with the students. So that is something I know she already does now with some of her own students, according to her, but providing some extra support there. Actually, maybe having someone to do more of a connection with the college and the university other than the college liaisons that they have, having someone there, maybe paying a stipend. We haven't really looked at the exact supports because we don't know who the students are or what they need. So that would dictate what supports we put in place to make sure they're successful.
Would one of you describe to us, who may not know, and the people in the audience, how the, how CTEC and Mosley, I mean, CTEC and WECs work as far as being on an accelerated
So the goal is always with a specialty program like that is that you have students who come in ninth and 10th grade, and then they leave with an associate's degree. But we have students that we have to, that that's not the case at all times. So when you say accelerated level, they offer different courses. I mean, we, we put in supports. If you would go back to and remember the board presentation that I did on CFCC and UNCW, we talked about there are times where we have to put in supports for our students, this was prior to this, because they might not be as successful on their campus. So that is the ideal, where a student gets an associate's degree, but not all students receive that at CTEC or even at WECs.
Okay, can I follow up? It's, I guess what I was, what I was hoping to hear was kind of like the, their freshman and sophomore year, they're compacting all of their nine through 12 high school instruction, right? And then in the 11th and 12th and 13th year is when they get, I mean, that's what Isaac Baer does, so that's not what WECs and CTEC does?
No, not necessarily.
Going back to this slide that, in the per pupil expenditures, and Mosley at $28,000, other specialty schools $13,000. So help me with this math. We take the building cost, we take the teachers, we take the staffs, all the programs, and then we divide that by the number of students in the school, and that's how we get the per pupil cost? Yes?
So I, I want our expert finance officer to be able to explain, or, or Dr. Barnes, be able to explain how the cost per pupil is, is created, but of course, it's, it's a collection of all costs.
That's correct. So it would be resources that go directly to that school, and it would also be resources that are shared among the schools. So for example, if we have five positions that support all of our high schools, then those expenses would be allocated, the prorated part associated in Mosley would be prorated to that school. So it's resources within the school and central resources that are also for that school and other schools as well.
So, not that bright, remember, with math. So if there were twice as many or three times as many students, the cost per pupil would go down. The reason the cost for people is so high is because there's such a small number of students in the school. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would definitely like, when you guys are bringing back the cost analysis, potentially the school within a school, some of those extra supports listed so we can see that, because I think part of this process is understanding that our students are taken care of in the event that we do transition, because that's the most important piece. We want to see success. So looking at this chart of the high school opportunities, it looks like advanced placement and STA E classes. CTEC is the only one that doesn't have that. And also, Mosley doesn't have that, but basically, you're saying the class sizes of Mosley are already so stall, so small, excuse me, that they're already kind of in that environment consistently?
Yeah. So stay is what we use in our traditional high school to basically make it a school that's smaller, a big school within a, a smaller school within a school. So it really, CTEC, stay, I mean, WECs, I'm sorry. Which one did you say? CTEC?
Well, I was looking at Mosley and CTEC first, specifically stay, and seeing that they didn't have one. So what you're, what I, what I got from what you were saying about Mosley is that the school's already so small, so they didn't need to have a stay program. But there's not one currently at CTEC, but there's potential opportunity to have that conversation to create one.
Exactly, because you see, there is one at WECs.
Right.
Right, exactly. Yes.
I guess that's, so hearing that, the extra supports, and then the other thing, because I know we've been given IEP percent data of all of our schools to see the population. I know we like to be close to that 13% number, and so I'd like to know that too, when we're doing that cost analysis, to see where the IEP percentage, because we know to service our students and the timing, we need to make sure that staffing is appropriate with that.
So, so just to understand the, the ask, having that percentage, if students, in a cost analysis, if students were merged into another school, perhaps? Okay.
Would you spend a minute on the stay? And if I'm understanding this in my simple way, because Mosley is so small, they technically are stay anyway. Am I right? Is, is that...
Stay is to make, when we do stay at our larger schools, we actually have students move together in cohorts. It's to make the school feel smaller.
So technically, it is that. It, just because, it, this marks, it says they don't have it, but it technically is that because it's so small.
Well, we, we actually don't provide Mosley with funding. I mean, we looked at the budget, it was a couple of, I mean, like $13 in funding that was sitting there for, the other schools actually have funding, it's a program, and they do other things with stay. I don't know if Mosley does that on their own without the funding that goes, but as far as the district is, when we have a line item, we don't consider them having stay.
Besides staying within their cohort, cohort, moving around, is there a one-sentence explanation for what stay is?
It is to make this, a large school feel small. If I could, if, if anybody wants to understand, it is, it's to make a school feel more like a family and for the students to feel comfortable in a smaller environment.
Yeah, is there a, is there a threshold of when small becomes not small? That if we were to transfer students into another school's stay program, would we encroach on this, the small-town feel?
I don't think so, because the stay, the stay program, you have, I don't know how, how small the stay classes are. I'm sorry, I don't know that. I can get that for you, but I know that the schools are always looking to increase and enhance their stay programs because they are successful. They are, they're, they're, we're seeing a benefit, and our students really, really find them valuable, because they also get the aspect of some college visits and some other things with the stay too.
Okay, good. The last follow-up there, so if, if our, our Mosley students opted to go back into their traditional high schools, would they, can they request to be part of the stay program and be incorporated into that small-town feel again, so their, their small classes?
We encourage them to, and are already, we were already looking into that being a part, because remember, we're going to make sure that our Mosley students are a priority. So it would definitely be something, an option for them.
Thank you.
Walker?
I, I'm curious, I know the slides, we talk all about, you know, how Mosley's doing compared to other schools, and I, I mean, I, I'm not going to look at it like it's a positive or negative, but like, it seems to me like we're looking at the graduation rate and all these other statistics, but there's got to be a reason why we recruited kids to come to Mosley, and there's got to be a reason, and what do we, what do we ask? What do we say? Come to Mosley because why? I mean, there's a reason the program was there, and it's, obviously, it's not like the other schools, so...
Well, I, I can tell you, I've asked that question and other principals, okay, what is that one thing, that one line? And the biggest thing is the small environment. The small environment is what, that I think the principal would tell you and the staff and the students, that a small environment makes a family feel.
Well, I'm looking at the report card too. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, is that okay? I mean, it showed more growth. I mean, I feel like it's 10%, if I'm looking at this right, 10% growth over 22 to 23. So I feel like the program's working, but I'm just seeing all these statistics about how it's not as good or it doesn't have enough, you know, as much resources. I don't know, I'm just, I mean, Mosley's unique for, for a reason, and I think that's why it was attractive to some of our students to go there. So I, I mean, I just feel like, I, I hate that we're looking at those numbers in a negative way. I feel like there's positive reasons why the program exists.
We actually provided you the...
I don't know what that tells you.
Okay, so the last slide that I will share with you, you already saw the costs, you, you've seen that, but the total cost for the high school is $1.3 million, and with a potential savings of $787,000. And that is it.
Thank you guys so much for being here. We're really looking forward to hearing what, what you guys have to say. We're going to start it off with Rachel Lattick.
Sorry, I'm talking to you guys for the third time, and I really had a hard time finding anything else to say, because I think I've said it all, but. Can you hear me? My name's Rachel Hladick, my son's a Mosley scholar. I still can't process how to find the best learning environment for my son. I'm still steadfast that Mosley is the best learning environment for him to this day. There are academic and social reasons for that, that you have all heard and gotten feedback from the Mosley community about. I also let you know that the communication assistance during this process has been lackluster. There has been discussion with Dr. Faust that there is no application for our students, but then when we meet with representatives that you sent to our school, they didn't know about that. Take note. And then we get information from these schools about fast-tracking our kids through three years of academics, which will be two for mine, because he was not on that track this year. What kind of supports are we going to give to these students? And then I send emails that go unanswered, and when I do get a response, I feel like it's passed along. I want a smaller learning environment for my son due to his ADHD, and if he had problems with communication and stuff like this, he would be reprimanded, and I feel like we're getting to that point too, as adults. We don't know what's going on, which is what I feel like's happening, and I just want answers. This is a critical time for our students, and please think about them. Thank you.
Taking that mic, just make sure it's self, please.
Good evening. I'm here tonight as a parent to advocate for our Mosley students who are being displaced and forced into schools that are not equipped to meet their needs. Mosley's provided a place where students feel like they fit in and have formed a family and a community of support. The teachers in the small setting loop with the students through multiple classes and grade-level curriculums, allowing them to home in on individual needs. The growth and success that the students have achieved in the smaller setting is evident. As parents, we want to know what modifications will be provided and the alternative schools offered. While we appreciate priority in school choice, we want the transition to be the right fit for our students. Will the modifications to curriculum require additional budget spending or new grant funds? Further, if you're operating in a zero budget, how is or was the newcomer school even on the table as a consideration? Additionally, what happens if the budget deficit continues to be a problem? Are more students than at, also at risk of being displaced next year and thereafter? Very few people in the community have heard of Mosley, including teachers from other schools. However, if the school were to receive better promotion, I have no doubt that the low enrollment numbers wouldn't be an issue. There is a need for this school, and there are other students out there that are unaware of how it can benefit them. These students have worked extra hard, these Mosley students have worked extra hard for the success that they've achieved. They don't deserve to be casualties of the negligence and budget spending and caught in the crossfires. I urge you to consider these students' needs as if they were your own children. I'm seeing a lot of conflicting information, and even what I'm seeing up here on the screen with the budget and $1.3 million and Mosley accounting for that, I don't see how those numbers are adding up. When the grant was funding some of the instructional coaches, if you do the math, I don't know any teachers that are making over $100,000 in salary. Thank you.
Did I say that right?
Zandria.
Zandria.
So I have a ninth-grade student who attends Career Readiness Academy at Mosley, who have grown tremendously because of the school. As a parent, I know my children, and this particular, particular child is my oldest, and he has the most kind heart, and he thinks that other people have that same heart, but they don't. And I've always been worried about him starting high school, but we attended the Culture Fest at Mosley last year, and that's what helped us make our choice. Because Mosley is more than a school. It's a family, it's a community, it's a support group, their team, they all work together and care for each other. And I remember the first day of, the first week of school, I asked him, I said, "Have anyone tried to mess with you?" He said, "No, everyone thinks I'm cool for some reason." And that just melted my heart, because it made me feel good that we made the right choice with Mosley. So to close up, my son have had an IEP since elementary school, and he's a very good kid, but he takes time to learn, and his grades haven't been as great as it is in a very long time, and Mosley is the reason for that. The teachers help, and they care for these children, and I feel if we just take these kids and throw them out in the deep sea of a huge populated school, a lot of them might get lost, they might lose their confidence, their hard work, their determination, their belief, because when they're out with a lot of kids, it's hard for teachers to help when they really need it. And thank you.
My name is Alex Finley, and I am a junior at CRA at Mosley. I want to thank you for your time and listening to us. I spoke at the previous board meeting about my concerns about shutting down Mosley. I shared my story and about the events that happened at my districted high school, and why I felt so much safer. Now I have some questions about the logic and pro, the logic and process about shutting down the school at this time. First, I would like to draw your attention to the closing school procedure, and I made copies if any of you want them. The procedure states that there is a responsibility to repurpose the school, not remove it entirely. Though I have requested the information through the Freedom of Information Act, I have not received any indication of the proper surveys, general statute 115(c)(4710), and another While I'm sure COVID was a factor in this, I question the timing of this decision. Things like faculty needs surveys and community outreach seem to have been, and correct me if I'm wrong, left by the wayside in favor of rushing through a final decision. Again, these are things that are mandated by North Carolina public policy. I was hoping for an answer regarding why now? Why is it happening on a six-month timeline instead of a five-year timeline? Further questions include, why is this decision being made without the facts that you need? The powers that seem to have gone about this with dubious legality and more, more, why are policies in place if they are not being followed? I'm concerned that this is a pattern of behavior with this school system, that decisions are made without the student's best interest in mind. Our school shutting down should not have been a surprise to anyone if the policies and statutes were followed. Again, correct me if I'm wrong, but the school board seems to have been kept in the dark about this the whole time. I need to, I need to underscore how much I do not blame the school board in this decision, but I do have questions, and I would like answers. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Angel Gore. I'm a former ninth-grader Mosley scholar. I'm 14 years old, and I came from Gregory Elementary School. I would like to start off by saying that even though Mosley may be shutting down, the little time I've spent there, I do not regret my decision of by, of applying, or the time I've spent overall at Mosley. And also, all the other specialty schools in Wilmington are early colleges. Mosley isn't our early college, it's a career readiness. Those are two big differences. I first found out about Mosley during my eighth-grade year at a career fair. If it wasn't for the career fair, I would have no idea what Mosley was and/or has become. I also blame the lack of advertisement for the low amount of students we have. From the start, I knew Mosley was for me. I applied, visited the school, and it got, and got accepted, not knowing the outcome. So far, I love Mosley. Mosley has opened my mind to many different career paths, options, strategies, and so much more. I've met so many great people and made really good bonds with almost every staff and student in the building, just to sadly be forced to leave them behind. One of the many things Mosley has taught me is that college isn't the key to a successful career, it's just an option in life. Mosley closing down doesn't hit me as hard as the many other students, but please take our feelings into consideration as they do matter. We don't want to be guaranteed that you'll help us find a good placement. We have found a good placement for us at Mosley. We in staff make, we, we staff and students make Mosley, Mosley. There's so much to be said, but the one year I spent at Career Readiness at Mosley wasn't a waste of my time or education, just a good memory I'll be holding on to forever. Thank you for your attention and for having us.
Hello, everyone. My name is Esmeralda. I'm here to talk about Mosley's closing. The first time I came to Mosley, I was scared, and after one week, I saw that it was a small school, and everyone got along. After that, I was like, I like this school, I feel safe. I have never felt like this for a school. This school is really the best thing that had happened to me. It's, has helped me a lot, and I have learned so many things. I like it here, because we are, are all a small family. Everyone gets along with each other and tries to help each other out. I think there is no other school like this. If Mosley closes, this will affect us a lot, because not everyone feels safe moving to another school, and we're, we wouldn't have the support we get at Mosley. This is a really important school for us. We all love our teachers, they are so nice, they give us their attention and help. I'm hoping you guys can help us keep Mosley open. We are important to this school. It has a meaning, we should, we shouldn't be this far away out of Mosley. Thank you, Board of Education.
What problems are we trying to solve? For the district, it's a simple budget issue. For the students at Mosley, they want to save their future. New Hanover County Schools described this program as a failure, as they defended its closure. What they failed to do is celebrate Mosley's successes. Let's celebrate how Mosley met growth last year, and how their graduation, graduation rates have dramatically increased since 2019. Let's celebrate how Mosley allowed children to access their education by removing barriers found in our other high schools. Let's celebrate the student who has dual enrolled after believing that dual enrollment would never be possible for them, and the child who was terrified of going to school because of bullying, anxiety, et cetera, and now is attending school daily. What about the child who was on the verge of dropping out of school but found a home at Mosley, and now is on the path to graduation? And the child who needed a transition period before being able to manage the rigor of other high school programs? New Hanover County Schools has tried to paint Mosley as a failure, but to these students, Mosley is a lifesaver. Mosley gives them hope and a future. Mosley offers an individualized education for student, for children who had been lost in the system and needs additional support to graduate. I'm watching New Hanover County Schools force students into a standardized education model, a model that has already failed these students. Why would we send them back to the exact schools, an education model that has already failed them? We're asking you to be creative and flexible so that we can preserve this program and continue to support these children, to preserve the program that removes barriers so that they can learn. There is a solution if you want to find it. We expect you to find it, because these children matter.
In June 2019, representing the New Hanover County Board of Education, I presented the Mosley graduating class with their high school diplomas. It was one of the proudest experiences of my education career, to officiate at the graduation of so many students who had, against all odds, managed to earn a high school diploma. Most of these diverse students would never have succeeded in any of our traditional high schools. It was and is impossible for some, and often socially, in these buildings with over 2,000 students, energetic, loud, intimidating to these students. Without Mosley meeting this unique education needs, most would be, have dropped out. Many of the students at Mosley have IEPs for a reason, and despite what I believe, some intentionally misleading data, Mosley has successfully put in place systems to meet these children's individual needs. It would most likely cost a lot more than $28,000 per pupil if these students were mainstreamed with the proper services according to their IEPs and 504s. The idea of a newcomer center was also misleading in a sense, if you understand that traditionally, newcomers' programs for ESL students are housed on the campus of the traditional schools that students will be transitioning into. I know, because at one point in my career, I worked extensively with ESL programs as an administrator. The real problem is a $10 million budget shortfall this year. That is why you were trying to cut a much-needed program like the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley. You and the superintendent refused to work and get proper funding from our county commissioners for our schools. We are the eighth wealthiest county in the state, and yet we are the 70th in the state for school funding when the wealth is taken into consideration. That's a fact. We also were promised priority of the $1.5 billion from the hospital sale, yet we have barely received a dime except through a questionable program attached to NOVIT. It is up to you to access the county's resources, to save programs like the one at Mosley, so that our schools can finally get the proper resources to flourish and continue to grow.
Thank you, Ms. Justice.
Good evening. My name is Tim Merrick, and frankly, I don't think I can do better than what these students just did. Thank you very much. But I will say that high schools are terribly important time in a young person's life. Not only for the educational content that they receive, it's also a time that their social development and self-identity discovery are critical, and that's for well-adjusted teens. How about our vulnerable populations, maybe even more so? I've known many parents who, when faced with having to move for work while their kids were in high school, declined to promotion or quit their jobs rather than disrupt those critical years in their child's development. I know that you, as parents, can relate to this, and I don't envy you this budget season. Your Republican legislature refuses to adequately fund public schools despite a court order. That puts our district in a terrible bind, and I appreciate the hard work you have in front of you to balance the loss of revenue due to vouchers, and how you lost the grant for Mosley on one hand, with the critically important raises for our teachers, if we expect them to stay, on the other. I'm asking you to reexamine all the expenditures that we have that do not directly impact students. I mentioned in my last call to audience that our administrative costs are 3% higher than our neighboring counties, and that relates to $12.7 million, enough to make up for the $780,000 you'd lose with Mosley. It's not enough to ask each department for a zero balance, budget growth, as Dr. Faust has suggested. We need to reprioritize all our spending. Before we disrupt students' education, and more importantly, their social and self-development, we need to clean up our own house. We need to cut out the administrative costs before we cut out the needs of these Mosley students. Thank you for making choices that prove that our children really do come first.
NC case?
Hello, I hope this finds you all well. I had a lot of stuff prepared. I'm actually quite emotional. You see, I was neurodivergent growing up. I have ADHD, I didn't get diagnosed until I was 40. I went to private school, and that was a blessing, but I can't help but wonder, if I had been in this district and this school system- I had been in this district and this school system today, would I be getting the stats juked in a direction that doesn't benefit me so that an ambitious superintendent could make way for a notch on his CV bedpost to create a newcomer school? Because I am sorry, we're gonna take the lipstick off of the pig and we're gonna remove the canine fecal matter out of the cupcake frosting and all that. Like, this isn't fair.
We're not here to talk about the newcomer school, we're here to talk about Mosley programming. So I...
You can stop the clock. I am focused on Mosley. And I don't appreciate being gaslit because I just admitted something in a public forum, and I admitted publicly that I have ADHD and that I sympathize and empathize with these children. And my point of consideration, a fair one at that, mind you, is that I don't think that we should be tossing them to the wolves for another endeavor. And I think that that's the quiet part out loud. These children deserve, you just heard them, they deserve to be in a safe space. Is that something that we talk about a lot? Safe spaces? Well, Mosley is a safe space for these children. And for those of us who can relate to having difficulty learning in challenging environments, I just don't see how you can justify doing this without any appraisal of the school board members or the county commissioners. That just seems incredibly egregious to me. We are the taxpayers, we pay your salary respectfully, Mr. Faust, and you made this decision, y'all made this decision without letting anyone know. That's a gut punch. How do you justify that? So I'll just leave it there. Thank you.
Natasha Toon.
I'm Natasha Toon, and tonight, I'm here to address Dr. Faust and Dr. Faison's decision to close the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley. This was made without the knowledge or approval of the school board members, and that's a clear breach of protocol and trust. The board members are elected to represent the interests of our community. They were kept in the dark about this significant change. This lack of transparency is unacceptable, and it undermines the very principles of this district's governance. Furthermore, the manner in which the parents of Mosley students were informed is equally troubling. And mere four days after the board was made aware of the closure, parents received letters informing them of the dissolution of their children's school. This hasty and poorly communicated decision has left families scrambling and worried about their children's educational future. The district administration, led by Dr. Faust and Dr. Faison, has overstepped its authority by initiating a student offboarding program without the board's consent or approval. This unilateral action disregards the authority of the board and, more importantly, the voices of our community. I urge the board to pause the rogue timetable for closures set by Faust and Faison in order to give parents some breathing room for a final decision is made. Right now, the district administration is forcing parents to make a new school decision by February 2nd. Thank you for extending that period tonight. This is not just about a school closure or a program closure, it's about the integrity of our educational system and the trust we place in our leaders. Dr. Faust and Dr. Faison have attempted to sidestep the community's wishes and the board's authority. Their actions have shown a clear disregard for proper process and for the stakeholders that they serve. It is imperative that they be held accountable for their actions. I stand with the community in calling for the preservation of Mosley Career Readiness Academy and for the termination of Dr. Faust and Dr. Faison for their blatant disregard of their duties and responsibilities. We must protect the educational future of our children and uphold the principles for transparency and accountability of our school district. Thank you.
David Perry.
Hi, I'm David Perry, candidate for this school board, but here tonight on behalf of the Mosley students. Now, I'm more for a return to a traditional, well-rounded liberal arts education. I'm not specifically talking about Mosley, but I don't like all the specialty schools and the vocational training. Our kids need to learn how to become critical thinkers in the traditional subjects. But be that as it may, the parents and students of Mosley, they've got a lot invested in there, in this school. And anybody who was at the prior meeting in December and heard those kids plead to you to keep their school open, I mean, I don't care what party you're from, that was gut-wrenching. And, you know, basically, and it's understandable, Dr. Faust just pulled the rug out from under them with no notice or public forum. And just less than a week and a half ago, he sat here in this agenda meeting and literally tried to say, well, we're not closing a school, we're just transferring a program. Hogwash. That is the biggest load of horse manure I've ever heard. Of course, we're not just getting a new building, we're transferring all the teachers and students and staff to different schools. We're closing the school. I think that the students of Mosley deserve better than, you know, dubious doublespeak on the topic. But we have to do right by them. So I don't know about the ultimate fate of the Mosley school, but I do know one thing, I'm for keeping it open and at least long enough so that every student there now gets to graduate. And some people will say, hey, we don't have 30,000...
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Fifty thousand, but we can find it.
Christina Mercier.
I'm here tonight to speak as a retired educator on behalf of the CRA at Mosley. Some kids flourish in large environments, however, most do not. The target student for Mosley is one who has consistently been overlooked throughout their educational career. In classes of 30 to 40 students, they haven't stood out. If they needed extra help, they may never have known to ask, and with overworked teachers and understaffed schools, they never got the attention they needed. I understand tight budgets. After all, I am a career educator, and we all are used to personally and professionally tightening our belts. But schools have one chance to educate kids properly in an environment where they can achieve the most success. When you start to only look at money and take out the human factor, you're doing a disservice to the young people who are your products, as well as to the community the school serves. Certainly, there are other ways to continue to serve these students as the tight-knit community they are, such as offering space at another school but keeping them together. When the students spoke at the board meeting in January, their speeches were powerful, but the one that impacted me most was the one from the young lady who'd been assaulted at her home school and no longer felt safe there. How can the school system find a safe spot for her? I retired from J.C. Rowe, and the school system used to send assault victims there as alternative placement. Yeah, the victims of assault got sent to the alternative school that was for suspensions and other major issues like that. I'm sure the young lady who spoke isn't the only one that's at Mosley for safety reasons. What are you gonna do to provide for students like her? How are you gonna ensure their safety? It saddens me to think that New Hanover County Schools does not value the good that has come from the CRA at Mosley. And despite the vile attempt to twist statistics, which can always be done, there's a lot of good at Mosley. Take your eyes off profits and look at the human beings who you're impacting.
Thank you, Ms. Mercier. Chris Sutton.
I wanted to start off by thanking the board members for some of y'all's questions. It's very apparent that y'all care, and y'all have definitely been doing your due diligence on this. This is also one of the first times in a long time that we've seen bipartisan concern, where, I mean, I watched Republicans and Democrats, I mean, they're applauding each other up here. I think we actually found a little bit of common ground that was needed. Hopefully, something better happens from it. Question for you, do you really think you would have received the same presentation if the administration was tasked with giving evidence to support why we should keep it? My personal opinion, that was a slanted presentation put together to support the superintendent's actions. Realistically, I was left... Thank you. I was left with a significant amount of questions that still were not answered. I mean, multiple times, y'all asked questions, and that would have helped support keeping it. Unfortunately, the data was not added, including 504s. I was looking forward to that answer. You know, we discussed, I've discussed Mosley with teachers, I've discussed it with parents. It seems like everybody is opposed to killing this program. You know, some of these questions that we were talking about, it really was outside of the box. For instance, can we reduce the cost if we move this program to another school? Can we reduce the cost per student if we add more students potentially? Another thing would be the student-to-teacher ratio. If we move them to another school, how are we affecting the other stay programs? Realistically, we have a significant amount of questions that are just not answered. At bare minimum, I believe we owe it to these children, at bare minimum, to see them through their education. They've found a home, we need to take care of them, even if we have to go to the county commissioners, even if we have to tap into the endowment fund for a one-time surplus potentially to get us by. So we gotta think outside the box. Truly do appreciate y'all's time today, and thank you for all of y'all's... I don't think anybody can blame the board. Thank you for everything. Have a good night.
Diane Zericky.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you, and thank you, Board, for everything that you've done. We understand that there's been a misdoing here. The question is, how do we fix it? We elected the seven of you to represent us and to make these decisions for us. And unfortunately, Dr. Faust and Dr. Faison have gone on and made a decision without consulting you. When things don't make sense, we have to ask ourselves, why? They are trying to push a different agenda. This has nothing to do with Mosley's numbers. This has to do with a welcome center for refugees. And if you watch what's going on nationwide, and the money that is being spent from our federal government to school all these millions of children who have been let into our country, the newcomer center is just that.
We are not here, the subject tonight...
The reason why Mosley is closed is because of the welcome center.
She needs to stop.
Take the lipstick off the pig. We have to take care of our own. We cannot open new programs at the expense of these children in this room. We are New Hanover County. We are not a sanctuary state, and we are not a sanctuary city.
She's doing it again. Point of order, Mr. Gore.
We take care of our own. I'm begging you guys, reverse this decision and take care of the students at Mosley. I'm sorry, Crable, if this hurts your feelings that we're talking about reality here, but this is reality. I watched a judicial hearing today. The students that have been fled into our country are costing us $88 billion a year to educate. I didn't realize we were being limited on our speech here. We have a freedom of speech, but we don't abide by the Constitution, do we?
Valerie Noell.
Okay, well, guess I'll follow that. Good evening. Yesterday, hundreds of community members came together to ask that, rather than dissolve the CRA program, that NHCS do a cost analysis of moving the program to one of the traditional high schools. This would allow the integrity of the program, the intimate, supportive, inclusive environment, to remain intact, but at a fraction of the cost, as staff and maintenance expenses could be shared. And not only that, moving the entire program would allow Mosley students full access to the array of opportunities and pathways that are currently unavailable to them, providing them the work keys and credentials required to fulfill our graduation policy and prepare them for a successful life beyond high school. While these credentials and requirements could be achieved by just dissolving the program and forcing these students to attend one of the other high schools, it will come at a high cost. Maybe not to any of you, maybe not to the district, but for these students and their families, the cost is tremendous. You'd be ripping these students from a small, supportive environment in which they thrive and throwing them into a crowded, stressful, less supportive environment. And while sometimes you have to make a decision for students that is best for them that they don't understand, making a decision indicates that you've weighed the options. Moving the CRA program to an existing high school is an option that hits all the marks. It opens access to needed pathways and credentials, it significantly reduces the cost to run the program, and, most importantly, it maintains the integrity of a program that has redefined how success in the classroom looks and feels when students believe that they are seen and that they matter. Thank you.
And one last try for Carl Pettis. Going once.
I have a question. Good evening. At the beginning of the meeting, you had mentioned that you have been funded, the school has been funded, by Bill Gates. I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
But anybody who signed up, anybody who signed up, speak.
That's everyone on the list?
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. That's the end of the list. I'm going to take a moment to thank everyone who has shared their images of the speaking and students of the CRA and Mosley especially. People think our performance is a part, and we'll be able to be present to thank them over the time of the evening. Again, through the economy and through the Mosley, thank you, thank you, thank you for being here today. I'm very proud of the parents, and thank you very much for being here. I always have the time to thank the Mosley parents.
So moved.
I want to make sure I understand this correctly. Dr. Faust, or Dr. Faison, did we lose the grant or did we not apply for a grant? I want to make sure I understand that.
The grant that they are referring to is for teacher professional development.
That's all?
That's all.
Okay, well, that's not the way it's... Okay. And number two, I have to ask, how long in the planning of this with your coworkers in the office? How long before, had you been planning this before the board found out about it?
This has been going in behind the scenes since 2021.
Behind... Wow.
Four months. I'm not gonna take that anymore.
No, I don't have to.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
A motion to adjourn is your second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.